We're just gonna wait and see who says something first. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Greenwood City Council meeting on this Monday, August 7, 2023, approximately 7:05 PM. Mr. Eriksen, would you call the road, please?
Yes. Casey Brown.
Here.
Ralph Meeker.
Here.
St. Terry.
Here.
Roger Rainwater.
Here.
Daniel was absent, Powell was absent.
Thank you very much. If everyone will please stand, we'll begin our meeting tonight with a prayer by Jeff Ivy from Greenwood First Baptist Church and our pledge led by Chief Sheriff Brown.
That's great. Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the opportunity to gather here tonight. God, we thank you for this city and the blessing that it is to all of us, the freedoms we enjoy here. And Lord, thank you for those that serve this city. We pray tonight that you would just guide this meeting and every decision that's made and just work all things together for our good and your glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May it be seen. At this time, I would ask the council, if you've not yet had a chance to take a look at it, if you would look at the minutes from our July 10th regular city council meeting and our July 20 special call meeting, looking for approval for those minutes. Make a motion or approve the minutes.
Second.
The motion, second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Meeker.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Rainwater.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is recognition and acknowledgement. I am overwhelmed tonight from all the important people that are in the room. We don't usually have this many important people, correct? But we're packed tonight. And it goes, well, I'm gonna rank you, and you're all important. So thank you all for being here. We do have a couple of special things to do tonight. Mr. Vanderwaal, would you like to lead us off with a presentation? I'll let you have it, Lord. Tell us what we're doing.
So all of us, well, most of us, the festivities on the Fourth of July, the Greenwood Track Team had a fundraiser pickleball tournament that we had Battle of the Paddle, which we raised funds for the VFW, local VFW. So I'd like to present to the VFW a check of $75,000 that was part of our fundraising effort. And then all the members of the teams that played had a family member or a relative that is a veteran that they wanted a game for the day to represent. So we just want to give this to you guys.
Thank you. Very nice. Awesome. Thank you very much. By the way, Francois is Francois Vanderwaal. I gave him his American name, because he's Frank, actually. So is that good?
I'm the only one with a name.
Okay. That's awesome. Thank you. And for those of you that don't know what pickleball is, you do not play with a pickle, I understand. But my wife and I recently bought you paddles, so they're still in the box. So we'll get after it one of these days. Thank you. That's awesome. And we appreciate the effort, as always. Thank you all. I want to say real quick, thank you. And we couldn't thank these guys here tonight. We recently, well, I'd say a few weeks ago, a few weeks ago, an incident, if you will, out at our dam at Greenwood Lake. We had about three and a half, four inches rain, I think, in about an hour and a half. And so that caused us some issues. We were not in danger of losing the dam, but it certainly did some damage to the side of the dam, what I call the apron. And our strength department, the guys, our water department, our sewer department all came together. And our engineer that we have on staff, but our engineer stayed the full day and took care of that situation. And I just want to applaud that. Kenny Dorsey is one of those guys that is just there every time we need him. And he works for the water guys. So I just want to say thank you to all of them. None of them's here, they wouldn't do it. They're not gonna come in public and let me thank them publicly, but I want to thank them publicly. So if you'll let me do that. I'm under the direction of course, Tim Ozinga, so we thank them very much. We have another very important gentleman here today who I always like, he's got like two or three titles, but one is doctor, one is state representative. Lee Johnson is here. And we had two gentlemen from Arkansas Municipal League, John Bookerston and Jack Critcher here to report him with an award. So I'll let you gentlemen come up. For Arkansas Municipal League to be in our presence, thank you, gentlemen, for coming down to Little Rock. We get to go to Little Rock every once in a while and see you guys. For y'all to be here is a big deal for us. It's a treat.
Well, it's great to see y'all. Thank you so much for having us. And I'm sure I'm working towards this, and Jack. And we do a lot of work with legislative session on behalf of the cities and towns of Arkansas. And I know the legislative session, sometimes we read about the paper, it's contentious, it's hard, and it is, it's hard. It's also a fully class act. And there's really no better class act amongst the 135 members than Dr. Lee Johnson. And we're here today to give him the Stevens Legislative Award. And I can tell you, Dr. Johnson and I have formed a, I would like to say, a great healthy relationship. And you listen to us, you listen to the needs of the city. And you were obviously a city council member here. And I can tell you, he still stands by his city roots. You do what you need to do for your constituents. You listen to us, you work with us, and you're just, like I said, there's no finer class act. You're a true statesman, sir. I want to present to you, I'm gonna have the city of Greenwood, I hope that's okay?
Yes, that's true.
And Arkansas, I'm just believe-
Yeah, I'm getting down there for Fisher, don't think I'm not.
Perfect. And in honor of those who give us a great example of your service to benefit the cities and towns of Arkansas during the 94th General Assembly, thank you, Representative Johnson.
Everybody in here, thank y'all. Y'all know how much I love this community, love the opportunity to serve. And it's just great being up here, seeing everybody, seeing all the friends, and seeing people in the council. Don't mess me up, man. There's where I'm spot. We got a lot better looking neighbors.
Yeah, I know that.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack? Oh, you want one?
Get in here with it, Jack.
Where's your? Good.
Thank you.
And by the way, I told you on the way down, you have to stay for the whole five hours. If I have to stay in Little Rock for a week, you guys still have to. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming down. These gentlemen do amazing work. Dr. Lee Johnson, obviously, does amazing work at legislative session. And these guys do amazing work in Little Rock. So we appreciate them coming down, for sure. Thank you. I'm gonna miss somebody. We have a great group of young men here today. And I think there may be some ladies here with the troop, for sure. This is Boy Scout troop 1989. And I asked why you guys were here, and I was told because you wanted to. Is that right? The young man in the very back's like, no, I don't really want to. Thank you for being here tonight. I could get service hours, and assuming this is what you're doing tonight?
Mayor badge.
Mayor badge. Awesome. Do I get one?
Uh, you have to do all the words.
No. Okay. Thank you for being here. If you need to participate or you got a question or something, let me know, and we'll go after that, too. So thank you for being here tonight. Thank you very much. Did any of my miss somebody other than?
Not that I won't.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. With that, we will move on. So again, thank you, everybody, for being here. And then Dr. Johnson, for your work representing us. We appreciate you. Committee reports. South Sebastian County Forests and Girls Club. I don't see Kenny there tonight, out here tonight. We have, I believe, Lonnie, does he? Yeah, he's got a nice report submitted to you, as always, if they're not here. Daniel Taylor, no one said you could leave. Okay. Thank you. SRCA, all reports. If you don't have one, let me know, and we'll find what you need to know as far as reports. Parks Commission, should go on stage, did you have anything that? Okay. Thank you. Quarterway Park Commission. Let me see, Teresa. Citizens Forum, next on the agenda. So I have one that has signed up tonight. Mr. Duke, are you here? There you go. So if you'll come and state your name and address.
My name's Jim Goode. My little, on 29th Route, Crest Drive. And I made a mistake almost a year ago, and I need to correct it by, when you had a special meeting about the senior center, I wrote it down, who wasn't here and what of them were killed or carried. And I forgot. He was at work, I knew he was at work. And it was a total mistake in public. I want to apologize.
No problem. Thank you, sir. Moving on, as always, I'll do, I don't do this every time, but if you meant to sign up and you didn't, we recognize you. Now we'll move on. Okay. Financial report, Mr. Marsh.
Okay, first, I'm gonna direct you to the key financial data that we created as a highlight of the whole report. It's in your, on your ballot. So if you have any questions regarding any specific line item in your sudden meeting. First, the city sales and use tax. Right now, our two mills of growth is 8.7%, which is 4.2% above our budgeted numbers for seven months out of the year. County sales tax, we budgeted 8.5%. We are at 7.5%, one percent below what our actual budgeted growth was. Still a growth. Advertising and promotion tax revenues, budgeted 6%. We are at 9.23, which is 3.23% above our budget. Cash flow was down 430,000. Net decrease in our cash for the year is 586. We're currently sitting with our cash fund balance at 16,215. Our percent decrease in our balance was 3.49%. So we are starting to see some movement in our capital expenditures that we anticipated starting to see this summer. That's why the expenses are so high compared to our revenue streams. One of the things you need to be concerned about as far as the percentage decrease, it's not significant to what our budget was. We should have, based on our 2023 budget, be down somewhere in the neighborhood of about 38% for the year. So I'm not anticipating us even coming close to that year. Some of the projects, the major projects, are being pushed off into probably 2024. Capital expenditures is one of, is the line item. You can see that solidifies what I just told you. We have capital improvements spent in 2023 so far of 1.5 million, 1.57 billion. That capital expenditures budgeted for the year, 7.6 million. And you can see the footnote underneath as to what's included and what's excluded from those numbers to be consistent. Just to give you a comparison, last month, we were at 15% of our capital expenditures spent, budget. This month, we're at 1.65. So they've spent 5% more. And you'll start seeing that number get a little bit larger as we go through the fall months. One of the things I did put in your packet is the last two pages. So I want to go on record to say, if you haven't voted for the county sales tax, whatever vote you want to make, that's up to you. However, I do want to just show you that these numbers are significant to the city of Greenwood. We have $2.7 million in budgeted revenues coming from county sales tax, as you know. If that is not approved, and it does not pass, what ends up happening is the boys and girls clubs will immediately be losing their $75,000. That is a pre-tax distribution. We also have $40,200 fee. That helps depraise some of the expenses to the police retirement. Then we have the post-distribution amounts, which you guys control as far as percentages to each of the general operating departments. I've given you a pie chart of, a color coded pie chart of what basically happens as far as the percentage of distribution to each of the departments, right off the top. One of the biggest things would be the police department, because they do not have a city sales and use tax that they can use for their capital expenditures, it's all county. So you're gonna see an operational impact to general funding, either specific departments, is rather significant for both fire, police, most of your emergency services. Parks gets a reduction of about 10%. And that's their, that's their distribution. So most of the 2.5 distributable amount would be lost to our operating departments. They have to make that up somewhere else, or some of the services and some of the activities that they are currently involved in would sacrifice, would be sacrificed in order to maintain our, our division. So I wanted you to see that. It is significant impact to the city. At 1% means, right now, our distributions are 7.45% of what's collected in Sebastian County comes to Greenwood. We are the third largest distribution of the county's collective tax, behind the tally enforcement.
And again, this is not a new tax, it's just a continuating of the tax. Sorry.
That is correct. It's merely keeping going what actually is on the elections pocket right now as far as your sales taxes is concerned. That 1% is, just so you know, in 2022, fiscal year 2022 distribution was 835,000 to the state. And of that 33, uh, 835,000, 835 million, see, 33.5 million was to Sebastian County. And of that 33.5 million, based on the capital distribution, we received 2.5, right at 2.5 million dollars. This year, it's looking like it's gonna be closer to 2.7. And that goes solely to operations of the general departments. Mostly to cover salaries and other expenditures. That isn't the day-to-day operations. Any other questions on that? A couple other things I want to point out or bring up right now for your consideration, as things are going on with the finance department right now. We just received our first CIC solar billing, which is from SWEPCO now. The SWEPCO plant, solar plant is up and operational, and we got our first CIC bill, solar bill. So we're working on ways to allocate that to the other side of the plant assets that we have that are utilizing the SWEPCO energy grid. So we're in the process of now being able to keep statistics on the SWEPCO side. AVAC has been going on for about a year, a little over a year. Our legislative audit has begun, but they're in their third week right now. It's being done concurrently with the water sewer audit. And I want to commend the Parks Department right now, because tomorrow night, they're having their absolutely first budget study session. And their budgets are well on their way, almost to the point where they could submit a budget right now. And that is where I'm trying to move the city to, is to start getting those budgets worked on early enough that we literally could actually improve the budget in the December meeting. So we are, we're well on the, on that way. And thanks to the work that the commission's doing, as well as Casey Gray.
I'd like to interject. Just as a former Parks Director, I think it's obvious I talk Casey here today. So thank you, Casey. And thank you, Dr. Lee, for laughing.
You didn't know it's true.
Never mind. We will go back in time.
The last thing I wanted to point out to you is we do have our insurances for property tax, uh, property tax, excuse me, we've done that. Property equipment and auto. And the renewals upcoming is significantly higher. As a matter of fact, just, you know, we do have two, ordinance, two agents that are kind of split amongst us regarding property that's concerned. Bassington came in at 6.3% increase on their assets that they are insuring. As far as our property equipment and auto from Osborne, overall, we are looking at a 37% increase in our insurance. That's huge. It's an increase over last year of $94,000. We're taking steps, that was on, that was on the first presentation, Jerry. I've asked him to go back and do some things with deductibles and with certain coverages. And one of the things that we're looking at is the deductible buyback, whether that's even needed right now, and whether we have the right buyback policy in place as far as the deductibles are concerned. If you look at just the total property equipment and auto, it's $65,000 increase, which is a 29% increase over last year. And our deductible buyback is $30,000 increase, or a 74.6% increase over last year. Most of that is caused because when you insure on a deductible basis, the cost of the building at 2% is your deductible, or you just increased it to three. Of course, the deductible buyback is looking at having to potentially remit a larger dollar amount back to the city. So there, they've increased that premium really significantly. It went from 38,000 to 67,000. So we, I just met with the mayor today and went over all of this. I was presented with this last week. There's a lot of things and options that we're looking at doing in order to lower that. We could roll the dice. I was looking at, when's the last time we even had to entertain a deductible payout? And by the way, this deductible buyback is only on wind and hail damage to certain properties that are covered under the article umbrella. So what we're looking at is potentially rolling the dice for a year and taking off that deductible buyback, or seeing if there's a way we could do a percentage of the buyback rather than all of them. So there's, there's some things that we're looking at. I know that I gave her a list of things to come back to me with. What I suggested to them was on our cars that we have currently, or our vehicles that we have that are insured, anything over 100, anything over 100,000, we were looking to move from a $1,000 deductible to a $5,000 deductible. Anything under that, which is considered a minor auto or minor vehicle, we would take a $2,500 deductible and see what that did. It actually just slightly south of $8,000 savings on that. So we may even look at making five across the board. We're also looking at vehicles that are greater than 10 years old, or eight years old, or whatever number we come up with, take off collision and just have it as a liability only, which would be significant enough. But we are putting our thinking caps on, and we are looking at structuring the insurances to be more reasonable than that. It's not like we're gonna just roll over the payback dollar, taking steps to insurance, physically prudent in order to have our assets insured significantly or sufficiently, but not at a morbid of taxpayers of $1.
Is that a chaperone or a ramble?
That's been discussed.
I mean, I know the folks in Osborne are a good part of a couple of our committees and commissions here in the city.
Well, I came from, over two years, it was mandatory that we put out all of our insurances for them. The same people can bid on, and the same people could also win on, and if people who lose bidder, you're not excluding them, all you're doing is including them. And the process that makes it, makes it work ahead of time. We did discuss that.
Absolutely. We discussed AML to the decision.
Yes, we did. Your name, Ken.
Anything? Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Anything else from Mr. Marsh? Thank you, as always. Next on the agenda is agenda additions. Right to say that the department has had none, so as the council does, we'll keep what we got. We've got a full agenda, but I think we're gonna, it's the, yes, sir?
I noticed that the 10th office has placed 100 to the rocks over here.
Yes. Yes. Somebody gets to talk to you before the meeting. So Mr. Powell is the one that's been pursuing this on behalf of everybody, as you know. And he removed the agenda, because he knew he wasn't gonna be here tonight. So I'm sorry, I should have opened that one for you. But I wanted everybody to say, because it looks really cool, we have pulled out. So it's not only agenda case, I'm sorry.
It's only agenda, but-
It is, yeah. We're gonna take one, since he's not here, so. That's what I'll be about. If that, I'm asking, probably doesn't. Thank you. It is kind of the planning and building show this evening, so bear with us if we get through all this, but I think maybe some of these will go pretty good. So first on our whole unfinished business, city attorney, ordinance updating city attorney duties was first reading. I was under the impression that someone was gonna remove that. I think Mr. Brown.
Yes, I'd like to remove that.
Okay. Number two is planning the building. Mr. Marsh, ordinance under regulating fences, second reading.
Good evening, council, mayor, plumber in this area. I have number two is regulating the fences ordinance that we discussed last month. This is the ordinance that Casey and I had worked on to regulate fences and easements for the city of Greenwood. This is for the second reading. I'd like for Casey to come up and be able to answer any questions that you might have of the ordinance.
I mean, she's- 400. Actually, it was kind of cool for back there, because Casey stood up, and I heard, yes, and they knew what you were talking about.
Oh, Casey, I'm good.
It's all right. He's already got it figured out. He's good.
This is the same ordinance that presented last month, changed with her request by council. I just want to take it along for you, and then if you have any questions. I did add a definition section, breakdown of all different types of easements per Roger West. And I did add a section back in for agricultural fencing per council and Roger West.
I make motion that we approve this for the second reading. How long? Second. I make motion, second, for the second reading, how long?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Meeker?
Yes.
St. Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Got an ordinance regulating construction of fences in the city of Greenwood Orange on Friday.
Planning building orders, rezoned 223 South Gunther, R1, R5, second reading.
I have number three, the ordinance that will rezone the property, this property of 223 Gunther for the purpose of construction of duplexes. This is, if you remember, this is a, the duplexes that they're wanting to build on that property. And we'd like to have it rezoned to R5 for the purpose of this construction. And this is for the second reading.
Thoughts? You have a question? And there, it's what the difference between R5 and going to just an R, I know, for a mult, for multiple family dwellings or whatever?
The R5, I thought when we, when we came for you, and this was approved for in our comprehensive plan, that you understood the R5 is for a mixed-use neighborhood, where you can put a duplex within an R1 area without spot sunning, as they would call it. And it would also give the builder the ability to have things like smaller side guard setbacks, smaller locks, or R1 as a 75-foot minimum front lot. An R5 would be able to do a 60-foot, excuse me, a 60-foot flat lot. So this fits into that area that the R5 was designed for, was to quit, to be able to put this within an existing subdivision or area of the city. There are two areas in the city that you all approved for R5 construction, this area and the area down Bell Road and areas over there. That's the reason why it's going for an R5 instead of an R2 or an R3.
I can tell you, do you know if that duplex is gonna be built on both of these parcels combined, or is each one of these parcels will be?
Ralph, we haven't seen a plat on that yet. They just had it for the rezon. And then once they present a plat, we will look at it and see how they are structured on there and see if it meets the requirements of an R5, which is actually a restricted zone. And so once it gets into that phase, then we, the wheels start turning on that. And we look at the initial plat, and again, how they want to position the duplex on the property.
No motion. We approve this ordinance for second reading, how long? Second. I have a motion, the second, review.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Meeker?
Yes.
Terry?
So?
And this Rainwater?
Yes.
Yeah, there's only, there's three of us.
Okay. I'd like to initiate the orders. Okay. I'd like to initiate the ordinance.
All right. An ordinance emitting ordinance number 23-10 for the purpose of rezoning certain property in the city of Greenwood, admitting officials owning that, that's the emergency.
Thank you. Next is planning and building, or buildings, sorry, ordinance.
Item number four is the corrective ordinance to rezon the area around Dogwood and Cedar up the map, showing the parcels that are involved in your, your fact that were incorrectly zoned to C2. And we weren't really aware of it until one property owner called us and was trying to sell his property, but the finance company said he couldn't sell it as a residential area since it was zoned as a commercial. And so, we're trying to make this corrected through the properties that were zoned commercially. As you know, these are parcels within the area, the commercial is often run along coke. But these are parcels that are deep into the Dogwood and the Cedar area that were remaining as a C2. So that's what we're trying to correct. And because of the size of the lots, there's some lots there, there are fifty-five foot lots, there's some lots there that are seventy foot lots. And so, because of the different lots that are, that are in that area, that is the reason why we were asking for the R5. That way, the property owners won't have to ask for variances and other things to make their property legally zoned and any other zone. R5 will fit that.
And again, what all to be in the R5 that goes on?
Single family or multi-family? There's already multi-family in that area.
You got one on Cooper Street?
Pardon?
Think you might have one on Cooper Street?
No, behind, to the west of Cooper Street, you've got hall homes, you have the apartments there behind hall homes, you have at least two, maybe three, possibly four duplexes in the area. You have a lot of rental homes in that area, too.
The duplexes are the ones that Mr. Brown recently built, or a couple of years ago.
You have patio homes that Mr. Lloyd built.
Yes.
So it lends itself, as it stands right now, if you had to read an R5 zone ordinance, that is a perfect example of an R5 zone. It has everything in there.
Right. And again, this is one of the areas, again, that's.
Yeah, that was approved to the, to the comprehensive plan, were approved as an R5 zone. We're just trying to correct the mistake somehow or another, and been there for a long time, and nobody has noticed it, but God tried to sell his property.
Make a motion, we agree, the second reading of this ordinance.
Second.
Motion, the second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
No.
Rainwater?
Yes.
I guess this will be.
All right. The motion passes. Uh, the mayor voting yes. An ordinance emitting ordinance number 23-10 for the purpose of rezoning certain property in the city of Greenwood, admitting officials owning that, the city of Greenwood.
Under new business, planning and building ordinance regulating data center noise attenuation, emergency passage.
This is a good one. I, a few months ago, I was in Phil's, I was mining, and John Wilson invited me to attend a Zoom meeting on the state statute that was passed regulating this industry. These are units that are put up, and they seem to be attracted to the rural towns like ours. There's one in Damascus, we're looking at Bologna, Harrison, Conway, several other towns in the state. But the problem with it is that they are a very high noise installation. People describe the noise that they put out as a jet waiting for takeoff on a runway, and it goes 24 hours a day. And so, municipal league, like I said, had the Zoom meeting, and they have recommended to the cities to pass this ordinance that will regulate these type of industries. And it gives a parameter of, you can't outlaw, you have to regulate. And in the ordinance, it gives you a parameter of decibels that is allowable for these installations. I think it's 1.0665. And so, the ordinance that you see in front of you was written by the municipal league. It would kind of like drop, drop your name into the area. And it is, their recommendation is to pass this under an emergency ordinance, because the law became effective August 1st of this year. And so, we're trying to get ahead of it. And thank goodness, Mr. Wilson showed up today to give Dr. Johnson his award. And so, we were fortunate to have the expert in front of us on this ordinance. And if you have any questions, I'm sure he would be glad to answer them.
So, probably.
Well, I was just, I mean, you have two councilmen missing, you know, and I'm just wondering, you know, what is the emergency that, you know, to pass this on emergency laws?
Well, if I may, so the, the noise is going to be really loud. And I think it's going to be more than just noise, like it's just aggravating. What we're hearing is that jet engine sort of sound. And the health, safety, welfare, and the citizenry. What I would worry about, if you don't pass it now, then, and then somebody tomorrow says they're gonna buy land in your industrial zone and set up shop immediately, and then it's gonna be facing, the fans are gonna face, you know, whatever area. I think now, because you can't, you can't pass it once that, once that place buys property. You can't change the rules once they buy property. So now is the time to do it. That way, you can make, control your public health, safety better, or at all, really, if you pass it now.
Yes. Literally, and you may not know off the top of your head, the statute or whatever that's telling us that we can't outlaw these are done?
Correct. Act 851, apartment. So what, the bill came kind of late this session, and we, we worked with the sponsor to make it such that we can have some control over this. And so, the concept was, you can't outlaw them. You have to treat them as if you treat other data centers. Crypto mining facilities aren't quite a data center in a traditional sense of the word, but it fits in the definition sufficiently enough that they, you can't, if you treat them similarly to a data center, you're fine. When it comes to noise, at least. And then you can, you can place them in your industrial zone such that if you need to spur economic growth, job creation, you can put them where you want them in the industrial zone. They have to be allowed. They can only go in industrial zones. Home-based business, home-based crypto, however, is allowed here. And I think coming up soon, the local ordinance will kind of address that as well.
I've also been informed that Scott County has passed this same ordinance.
We worked with our brothers and sisters of the counties to make, to get this ordinance together.
The county council, will?
It's passed the county, yes.
I just, I always get confused on, there's a lot of things that we can outlaw in this town, and we can tell people what they do to their property. And then, all of a sudden, there's some laws that's come up and says, we can't tell people what they're property. And I've only been up here 16 years, and I have no clue what we can and can't do in this city. It's amazing, but I keep getting really.
Yeah, it kind of changes. And depending on what the issue a-jour is of a legislative session, it kind of depends on what the legislature's thinking about how to deal with this certain thing. This is kind of, this is a new phenomenon. And the story that I hear is that China apparently have kicked them out, I think because of the grid, because it comes where I heard. And so now, there's companies, not just Chinese companies, but I mean, but we have cheap land and cheap electricity. And so, we're just a prime spot for these crypto mining facilities.
And so, this is really, I'm not just pretending to, commercial applications right there. This reading, right, you said, we try to like something for homeowners.
Yes, our, our noise ordinance that we just got through passing a couple of months ago, what we're doing, it is in state statutes, it says you can't make this crypto mining noise any more restrictive than you do your, your normal sound ordinance. And so, we've gone back to our, our sound ordinance that we just got through passing, and we use the same decibel that we did for the crypto mining in that. So that, therefore, we can, I can say that we're more restrictive on that.
If I may, just live with the context. Again, I'm, I know the law, and I know how it's dealing with this. My understanding of the crypto industry is that there are fan-cooled systems. So it's a lot of computers, you do a lot of work, and typically, all of our, all of our computers are fan-cooled. They're very, very loud. On the other hand, you have water-cooled systems, and they're very, very quiet. They're quiet, they meet the threshold. So the counties and us try to find that nice amount, or nice noise level that we can live with. And so, it's water-cooled versus fan-cooled. And if I may, we talked about this earlier, the water-cooled system will have issues with, potential issues with, I don't know, I'd say pollution, but, you know, there's going to be some things that are going with the water. We still have control over that. So we, this actually, the bill actually puts us in a pretty good position to control this, because noise is the big issue. Is, now, what injury, I'm not sure how much your, your, is it injury up here? Right. So, you know, they have an issue with how much they can provide, but it's all made in this way, where hopefully this will be, you know, okay.
You can go on to Google, put in crypto mining Arkansas, and it's just boom, 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 boom. There's more stories of communities turning away, Harrison, Bologna, all of them are saying, no, not in our town. And like I said, we're trying to get ahead of it. The law has become, was passed, and became a fact that, you know, August 1, and so we're trying to stay on top of this. That's the reason for the emergency clause.
It's gonna make it more stringent than what's in this stuff that y'all have.
Well, we don't think so. We worry, it's some, it's very, it's very tricky to figure out that sweet spot. If you go much quieter, you run the risk of nobody to say anything in that, right? That's kind of the concept, that's, oh, we're selling it. But we're trying to find that spot where we can make it work for everybody, not too restrictive that, basically, in essence, you can't be here at all. And try to find that sweet spot. So the county association and us came up with this number. We feel confident that this 55 during the day, 65 at night, or 65 during the day, 55 at night, is legally admissible. And of course, not a tale, but we think this is the best route to go.
And in some of the articles, they say that they cannot meet that. Basically, they can't get, get their system down to match that. But you're giving them a baseline, and basically, what John says is it's a way that we can say, hey, we're not telling you, you can't come here, but here's our rule and regulations.
Alpha Packaging is only, they got a bill that tells them to ever have any issue with noise. I don't know what the number they have, or.
I don't, I lead at them, you know, I've, I've chased that, that sound up and down Bean Ridge, and sometimes I hear, sometimes I can't. And I've had people that live up there that said that I didn't know that there was a noise there. And I've heard people say that it keeps me up all night long.
Well, I, I live out that way, and I, sometimes I hear, I know there's one gentleman that's got a child with special needs, it affects him more than others. I just want to make sure we're not going something out here and changing our other laws or incident in multiple districts, those kinds of.
Yeah, if I may, so this, this would only apply to data centers. It doesn't apply to existing industry that happens to be loud. And so, this is data centers, which includes crypto.
So it's just specifically data centers, that's what, yeah, we're not, not in the other.
Yeah, you have your other noise ordinance, because when it comes to home base, we'll get to this too. I'm sorry, I forgot to tell it. Home-based businesses, home-based crypto, you can't place any different noise ordinance here to, pretty much everybody else. So that's a blanket noise ordinance. This one is just noise ordinance for data centers.
Mr. Crypto would be the definition of this.
Well, I'm tagging to what Tim was saying, you know, in some ways that we can restrict here, but, you know, this one, we were talking previously about converting parts of towns from C2 to R5, or R1, R5. But then we can't go in there and we can't restrict what kind of facade is going to be on, you know, on the house. You know, subdivision can, you know, but we as an individual, you know, so we can't control, you know, what, you know, new building is going to be right next to, you know, the existing homeowners there and protect them. You know, it just seems like, you know, that's kind of a.
I thought that about for three months, and lost. But we're really down to something management. Yeah, I agree. We all thought that, that one.
Well, I make a motion to put this ordinance on for first reading, by how long, second? Make motion, the second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
unanimous. I'll read the title of an emergency ordinance adopting certain rules and regulations concerning certain noise attenuation of data centers and for the purpose of the city of Greenwood, Arkansas, to declare an emergency and for the purposes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance for building replacing ordinance. I make a motion of the way, the second, the third reading, yeah, first, thank you. No, we're good, and then, um.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Make a motion without the ordinance.
Second.
Motion, second, to the.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Make a motion, and that works, Paul.
Second. Motion, second, to the.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Make a motion without the ordinance.
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Make a motion, and that works, Paul.
Second. Motion, second, to the.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Make a motion, and that works, Paul.
Second. Motion, second, to the.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Make a motion without the ordinance.
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Make a motion without the ordinance.
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Make a motion without the ordinance.
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Make a motion without the ordinance.
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Make a motion without the ordinance.
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Make a motion without the ordinance.
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Make a motion without the ordinance.
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Make a motion without the ordinance.
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Make a motion, and that works, Paul.
Second.
Make a motion, second, to the. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Make a motion without the.
Everything based on his math was in five B's on here.
Yeah.
Sorry.
You're up.
Yes, sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
Need later, Paul?
Next item is item six, is Reveal and Replace ordinance. The 2305 is our noise ordinance. We just passed that, not long ago. But the reason for this is that the state law says the ordinance for the control of the data centers cannot be any more restrictive than other noise ordinance within the city. Our noise ordinance that we passed, and it's Yeah. And our code enforcement goes out and tells them that you are breaking the ordinance on loud noise. And they say, what is your ordinance on loud noise? And there is nothing in that ordinance that says this is what it is. It just, you know, loud movers? Is that loud noise? Or is somebody playing a trumpet at midnight, a loud noise? You know, it gives the decibels that is, that is acceptable.
Well, is where should we define again? I know in the, when we just passed, you know, we kind of defined part of the noise as broadband noise or low frequency hum. I was going to say, should we include that in this one? As we, or is noise noise?
I think the decibels will suffice, they say, that gives us a, a level that we can prove or disprove.
So it was tough, I'll, I'll give you an example. A couple of years ago, it was that long, there was some construction going on less than two blocks from here. And it was going on at 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. And I was in the mayor's office, or my cell phone was getting called complaints from residents that were literally next door. And it was, it was dozers and backos and the beating and all of that. So what I did was stricken for something that we have without really a level of, we didn't have that enough. And so the question was asked of me, of the, said offender, what is that? I said, loud. So they complied. It was, it went okay. It didn't get bad or anything. But I really didn't have a lot, I didn't have what I think I needed.
What kind of thing is this?
It was a lemon white knight.
Now, that, I would probably put times in there, unless you couldn't get something of purpose.
Well, and the time is there too. But, but not, and for instance, I'll be a little bit ridiculous, because you know I belong to a poor town. So we're hooting. It was not allowed, or we can't hoop grow loud here in town. Did you see that?
I see.
Okay.
How do fireworks?
Um, what did we, we talked about fireworks, public, I can't remember what we came up with. It's not in here, it's not in this ordinance.
I think that's under our fireworks ordinance.
I think we have, yeah, we have, see. And again, there's times for citizens to be able to shoot those.
Like I said, if you look at section 11, it's, it's the, the decimal and also the time. You know, we have ordinances that says, like our unsightly ordinance. And how do you define an unsightly? You know, that, that, and this kind of fits in that same realm. It's how do you define loud noise? Well, with the decibels there, you can just define them. But we haven't figured out a way to define it slightly yet. It comes back to the mayor.
Do we comply on the order established?
I would imagine that they, they would be grandfathered in. I was, is the only one that I can think of is one of the kinds of ordinance. And I, like I said, I've been out there and chased that around. I certainly don't see that as a, 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 we need that.
Of course, like you said, like Mr. Terry said, last thing you want to do, or things agreed between the lines, last thing we want to do is punish them. They've, they've been in existence for a long time.
Yeah. And they worked with the city on, on sound ending and things like that.
Do we have a decimeter that measures noise?
I don't.
So we do not? Then we need, we need a cable.
That would be uncodeable.
Obviously, definitely.
Download on your phone.
Sir?
Can you download one on your phone? I've got one.
You make it download on your phone. Have you seen me and my phone?
That actually does.
No, I just say that.
Chief's got one.
Chief's got one. If you are now our phone enforcement officer, sound.
Sound, please.
Sound.
Sound worship.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir. Where are you? Come up?
Jim Reynolds.
Yep.
Uh, when I was in college...
Jim, if you'll come up to Mike, just in case, he knows how to make you do it.
Yeah, I was trying to stay back there.
Thank you. I just went through the deal, how to run more of these things, obviously. I'm trying not to...
Was that the one, the pitcher, the beaver?
That would be the buckies, yes.
Okay. Um, I was in college one time, as much as some, some other people in here, and I had, my best friend got arrested one time in Fayetteville, University of Arkansas for playing his music too loud. And he was told, he was warned the first time that his music was too loud because it reached a certain decibel meter level. And if it was, and if he kept continuing to do that, that he would come back and he would be arrested. Well, he tested that theory and guess what? He was arrested. His best friend went and got him out. And we've laughed that, about that all of our lives. But it was because there was a measurement and the policeman had a decibel meter and measured it, and therefore he was out of compliance. So just, I know that you're trying to protect the businesses and I, I respect you for that, Tim. And, but anyway, I just thought that applied to this situation.
Absolutely. I gotta, I gotta assume that you changed the name of the friend to you. All right.
Yes.
All right.
To protect the...
Two percent. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Welcome.
Make a motion to me, not this ordinance, I found only...
Put it on first reading, by the way?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Motion, second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Frank Martin?
Yes.
You know, this, I want to repeal and replace ordinance 23-05, permitting a real and a valid disturbance in the town, and it's very, very, very important.
I make watch, the scouts may go with Mr., no, Mr. Williams. Exactly. Thank you all for coming, thank you.
Thanks, Nigel.
Thanks, Nigel, again.
Thank you, John.
I'm sorry for...
Second, real person, second.
Second.
Brown?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Frank Martin?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, you'll just come, valid in 30 days, right?
Well, we need to adopt it.
Yep. I make a motion to adopt, take it, second. Motion, second, to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Frank Martin?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, you'll just come, valid in 30 days, right?
Well, we need to adopt it.
Yep. I make a motion to adopt, take it, second. Motion, second, to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Frank Martin?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, you'll just come, valid in 30 days, right?
Well, we need to adopt it.
Yep. I make a motion to adopt, take it, second. Motion, second, to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Frank Martin?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, you'll just come, valid in 30 days, right?
Well, we need to adopt it.
Yep. I make a motion to adopt, take it, second. Motion, second, to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Frank Martin?
Yes.
You know, this, I want to repeal and replace ordinance 25-15, instead of replacing a parks and recreation commission and adding a planning advisor design for other purposes.
Red light center.
Well, yeah, that's a...
Yes.
Mine.
I wait till it fills in effect.
Did you want, did you want to fill the white?
Uh, if, that's, that's the council.
What's that?
If they would like to wait second, third reading on it.
I mean, I think that we, we, you know, we have kind of a full council or more.
That's fine, I mean, if there's no emergency to it, and Hunter can, Hunter can attend the meeting along with me. He normally does, anyway.
Typically, I think.
Uh, item number eight, this is repeal and replace ordinance 604, oh, 604, sidewalk ordinance, regulating the installation of sidewalks and residential commercials on the perjury. Again, I'm going to bring Hunter up here and he's worked on this ordinance and he will be available for any questions if you mind it. Hunter?
You, you didn't want to break Casey, huh?
Uh, no, Casey. I'm tired of Casey.
In your package, you're going to see exhibit A, B, and C. That was due to Mr. Terry. So exhibit A should be the finalized draft, ready for the first reading. Exhibit B will be the messy version. It's got all the changes with everything from the original ordinance left down to structure. And she also attached the current ordinance in effect, exhibit C.
Because he changed so much of it, it was hard to just...
I changed a lot. I moved a couple of sections around, which made it really difficult to accurately show the changes that I wanted to be in place. This does cover new commercial and residential development outside of the scope of the subdivision, like those requesting. Is it located, built, met, in little dots on the country? I had to Google it.
Beautiful.
I think that is the wrong term.
Senator, we don't want, we're going to add page.
Excuse me?
It does.
So the A exhibit is the one that's going to be on the books that we're fixing to restrict. Correct. And I do have to take this to the planning commission. I will have a, a result from them next, cancel meeting. I told them I'll bring Mr. Lynn first, he goes, gotta have that.
It's just not to get it a month out, a month ahead, kind of, for the first reading?
Are you, are all the same terminology and definitions from the Penns ordinance that define the subdivisions? Specifically, the public access division that seems to have come up above this one?
On, I guess I have an issue with section 14, that payment in lieu. Somebody comes back to, it's, well, it sounds like it's, like it's real easy for them to just say, hey, I'm going to do the payment in lieu, it's going to be a sidewalk. And then we get sidewalks.
I put that it has to go in front of the planning commission there. So it does have to go in front of the body. It's not just up to the planning department to accept the payment in lieu, which means they would have to come to us with reasons of why they don't meet the opergraphically ensued. And I think it's safe to say anymore, anymore, I guess is a good term, we're in the sidewalk building business, as you can see through town, it would take a lot for it not to be suitable. There is an example, I agree with you, that would fit the, it doesn't fit when opergraphically suitable, that the planning commission would recommend not building sidewalks to new proposed dollar general on the corner of 10 and Express. If we were to run a sidewalk along Highway 10 right there, that would encourage children to walk through that sidewalk and try to cross where there's not a crossing guard on a busy, on a busy highway. So once we get the future development on that northern side of the highway, we would go back and build sidewalks. Now, we did request improvements for the section where they would be required, and that just made the payment in lieu up.
Well, I was just wondering, you know, say payment in lieu up, you know, I, yeah, I want to contain even more of a sentiment, you know, just like saying, we're going to serve water outside the city that was then from the 25% surcharge. And I'd like to say, maybe, you know, if you have your, based on local standard cost per square foot, you know, I'd say plus a, you know, a 25% surcharge on that or whatever to just make it more. It encourages men to say, hey, yeah, that's going to be worth it. You know, us doing it, doing it right then instead of us trying to get around to it, you know.
You can put a plus, plus a percentage on, on the cost plus 20% or whatever you guys feel would be fair.
And let me correct myself. I said we're in the sidewalk building business. We are not a street department. We are in the business of search, searching for grants that they can then fire out to get these things built. Well, I certainly like Casey's idea about sweeping the pot because I agree, once construction's going on, there's no reason not to just put it in there while it's going on. I mean, if it's a sidewalk to nowhere, eventually they can blow up to it.
Mary, have you ever compared our sidewalk fees to anybody else's? Does anybody else say these have those?
You talking about the fees on section 12?
Sidewalk fee.
I had none. No, those are the maintenance fees. I had none.
I put $50, $100, $100.
I did not. That's what we use currently. I did not change this.
Right, we use it for, ever since I'm working. So I just wondered, yes, right. And I mean, I don't want to be hard on, you know.
Yeah, that's broken down based on different types of permits that get issued. So for the remodel permit, if someone's going to come in for a $50 permit, I don't want to charge them $200 for sidewalk fee. The permit's on $50.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Lloyd, do you have something as far as building outside the city pertaining to this?
Do you have, do you, do other cities charge this comparatively?
Sorry, I didn't understand that.
Do any other cities charge the sidewalk fee that you've ever seen?
Yeah.
You know, maybe this fee. Well, they, well, they just might get very, uh, I like before you won't put sidewalks.
Yeah.
That's...
You need incentive to build your own. Well, we're saying in section 12, the fees are fees that we do.
I mean, I'd prefer to pay $100 than put a, two, three, four sidewalks in.
On, I mean, we do those anyway. And then the payment in lieu is on, on top of this.
Yeah, that's why they're in separate sections. That fee, that fee costs every permit, every building permit.
So I can see where, did you say it was a small thing, you know, you just want to charge me about $200 or something like that.
Yeah, now, if you want to go up the new construction permit cost, then that's, that's your priority. I definitely see some increase in that to size of building cost. But if we're going to start requiring to put sidewalks in, I would rather pursue looking to, pursue alternate funding for the sidewalk fund than these fees. So if I'm putting a sidewalk on my construction, I'm not charged a fee?
Correct.
That's what I would like to, right now, this ordinance, you do charge the fee, and you can put the sidewalk in.
Yeah.
See, I disagree with that. If I'm putting a sidewalk in, why am I charged a fee? I think it was intended in case for future repairs, but I believe it's what, that's money's there for.
Yeah, it's a maintenance.
It's a maintenance fee, but it's, it might as well burn the $50 at the door. The $50 doesn't prepare anything.
Well, you can even truck for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have sidewalks that are old, that probably, I'm sure, 20 years old, they're, you know, they're there. I'd like to see on, on number two, that we say payment in lieu should be based on local standards. And I don't have to word that thing.
I'd say plus, plus 20%, sorry, sorry, 20%.
I'd say I'd say plus 25% surcharge.
You know, you could word that current, current estimate plus 25%.
And that'll be the payment in lieu should be based on local standard cost per square foot and sold sidewalks, plus 25%. Now, I will say with the, with this maintenance fee, if, with every new residential, I mean, that's a, so there's 50 stacked up. We don't prepare a whole lot of sidewalks. We've got some that have been down for a long time. They have, they're still in pretty good shape. So I don't think we use, I mean, I know that's dropping the bucket, $50 doesn't sound like a whole lot, but it's stacked up. you can put in sidewalk.
Yeah. See, I disagree with that, if I'm putting a sidewalk in, why am I charged a fee? I think it was intended in case for future repairs, but I believe it's what, that's money's in there for.
Maintenance fee.
It's a maintenance fee, but it's, it might as well burn the fifty dollars at the door, fifty dollars doesn't prepare anything.
Well, can you name a truck for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have sidewalks that are, how old, that probably, I'm sure, twenty years old, or, you know?
General repair.
I'd like to see on, on number two, that if you say payment in lieu should be based on local spenders, uh, and I don't have to word that thing, we do like that.
I'd say plus, plus twenty percent, start, start by twenty percent.
I'd say I'd like to say plus twenty-five percent surcharge.
Okay. You know, he could word that, uh, current, current estimate plus twenty-five percent, you know, something like that.
And that'll be the payment in lieu should be based on local standard cost per square foot, and it's all sidewalks, plus twenty-five percent.
Now, I will say, with the, with this maintenance fee, if, with every new residential, I mean, that's a, so there's fifty stacked in there, it's not that, we don't prepare a whole lot of sidewalks, we even have some that have been down for a long time, they have to be, they're still in pretty good shape, so, I, I don't think we use, I mean, I know that's dropping the bucket, fifty dollars doesn't sound like a whole lot, but it's stacked, uh, I mean, I thought that...
I don't know, do you know how much we've collected?
Uh, it used to be a bunch there, I think drained it for some other reason, or, you know, elsewhere. I think it'd be better to...
We, uh, collected, we're budgeting ten thousand, but we collected four thousand one hundred and fifty so far, as of today.
What's in the sidewalk fund, do you think? How much have you, that's seventy thousand? I'll probably borrow...
We gotta find our funds. It's, uh, it's negative because we haven't gotten the re- the remit from RDOT. It's a virtual account, it's tied to the street, but we submitted, uh, the payments, and then we give it to, uh, German insurers, if he submits the documentation, RDOT, and RDOT gets the remainder of the money instead of due from the grant to us, so that'll be wiped out, uh, as soon as RDOT sends a remit to the next...
But there was, like I said, what's seven thousand?
What, yeah, what account is that, so, that's seventy, or seventy thousand, seventy-seven thousand?
Twelve, well, it was twelve three hundred, street, uh, sidewalk ticket, you do have a virtual account, but that's also the account that we paid for construction, for all of that sidewalk. Now, as a pro, we just, we pay it ahead, and then we get remarked.
I would like to remove the maintenance fees out of this ordinance, I would rather all the citizens, the whole, contribute via a portion of some type of tax to the maintenance of all city used sidewalks, instead of putting it on the back of only those that are on premises.
And now, you remember, you get there from one percent from admin and gen- admin adjusted over to sidewalks, so we're putting about twenty-five hundred dollars in there every month that we get the remit for the maintenance costs.
But, is that, and this generally provides about how much, I mean?
The budget of ten this year, we might come close to that, we're right, we're starting to pick up on the building permits, we just...
So, it's, I mean, it's not, uh, yeah, it's not a moneymaker force, but, again, you know, if I'm building a, you know, uh, giving a hundred thousand dollar home, a hundred dollars, I mean, it's not really, you know, that much, I'd, I'd rather kind of do it this way, as opposed to trying to say, put another tax out there, or whatever, to say, you know, we're, we're trying to shave off the city sales and use tax a little bit more than, you know, or something like that, until we actually have to.
We are moving in the direction, though, in every new building residential home outside of the subdivision, they will be putting sidewalks in front of their own easement facilities to nowhere.
True.
So, that, that's different from, from before, before, they weren't installing sidewalks, but they were paying fee.
But, I said, we still have some maintaining sidewalks, you know, throughout the city.
I don't, I don't have a problem with putting sidewalk in, and Jeff has been very clear, he's been very easy to work with, but when I built the houses on the beach, I was told by the street department head, "You're not gonna get a CFO to put your sidewalk in." Couple of months later, Daniel Grun comes behind me the street over, and puts duplex in, and no sidewalk.
Yes.
So, I just wanna, I think it needs to be straight across the board, if you build something, put a sidewalk, they will come.
Sure.
I agree with you.
That's how it's... CFO's creative to, to, you know, uh, to, I mean, you have to be on the head, just like, you know, you don't get it unless the other sidewalk, you wanna sell a house or not.
He says, if Jeff Grun's step comes along, he says, well, state business, why did you, why did you put that sidewalk there, it doesn't go anywhere? Well, I want to, I want to close the house, after that first house, I hadn't continued down the street.
Sure.
But, actually, now, you're just the end of the street now, still.
Yeah.
The mayor said it'd come.
That's right. It should be, you know, a line, you know, throughout, you know, no matter who's been, you know, it should, I guess, sidewalk to be there.
I made sure the title's section two subdivisions, and then section three developments, that's the all the difference between the two.
Well, I think, motion we pass this ordinance, I'll only the perjury.
Second.
We have a motion, second, you know, Clark. Like the amendments that I had, that was for...
We missed the twenty-five percent over on the...
Everybody know where it's at?
In the...
Dr. Lee, you wanna catch us up on anything?
No, no, it's all good.
Is it real?
I could actually have my clerk on my...
You wanna do that? I'm not gonna, yeah, that's for sure. Uh, do you hear the one about the councilman?
Please, Al.
Wow. Well, it's either that or I seen. Should be back in a moment there. Yeah. Yeah. Ladies and gentlemen.
There's a motion in a second, I don't...
There is a motion, second.
Give me the motion.
I'll add the motion to put this ordinance, uh, on the perjury, my title on...
Beautiful.
Second was?
What did they amend? But they amended the twenty-five percent overcharge on the in lieu of...
Forty-five percent.
Forty-five.
Wow.
Forty-five, no, maybe?
Who's second, though?
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Greenmark?
Yes.
Continue, Ms. And ordinance, and ordinance repealing and replacing Greenwood ordinance number zero six dash zero four, amending ordinance number five ninety, requiring and regulating the installation of sidewalks or pedestrian circulation systems as part of my street construction and residential and commercial development, and new residential and commercial subdivisions in the city of Greenwood, Arkansas, in its planning jurisdiction and for other purposes. Hunter, did you ever discuss that? In the future, aren't we gonna miss with the five ninety, 'cause this amends five ninety, so our effort of not amending?
Yeah, in the future, my company, my company addressed the surface regulation, all including the sidewalk, and then, like, we're being five ninety.
We, we're cleaning up some past convolutions.
I appreciate you, Charlie, having the B and C on here just for clarification.
Oh, you like that? You're welcome.
We've started to add a little more convolutions.
Well, I was ready to get to the next paper, but...
All right, number nine is, is kind of a joint effort between street, myself, and the, under Planning Department, so, I, we put it under street, it's resolution, a resolution to amend budget for easement survey, and so, this is to begin and will continue, uh, what I deemed wore on, uh, drainage a few years ago, and so, I don't know, if Hunter you wanna talk about, 'cause I think you're the one to kind of gear it up, or teed it up, if you look.
Yeah, I, I went through and looked at all of our subdivision flats, and where we currently have drainage, and where we don't, and highlighted the issues in town that were the largest, and what we should tackle first, or what's giving us the most problem. I identified from Nashville Street South, all the way to Bell Road, continuing east to the city of Montgomery, there are roughly six thousand linear deep of drainage ditch, uh, some of it is within flat drainage esements, but half the ditch is in easement, the other half is, uh, shoulder does, has one way, and is now just in so much property, we don't have legal access to, to clear or clean, so, there was a six thousand feet identified, and I requested the press engineering show us a quote to just survey the easement, and give us some legal descriptions, so that we can...
Yeah, a lot of the, a lot of the property owners that obviously have real issues with flooding, think that this ditch behind the property is, we're, we're good to get in there, and we're really not, by all, until we get this all squared away, so this is the very beginning of that, but as, as Hunter said, is getting, getting surveys, know what is available, what's ours, and what we can do, and then it's not as easy as all that, that begins the task of getting in there and doing the cleaning.
First, we gotta get the easements.
We gotta get the easements before we can be, get in legally, so...
There were three, three identified areas, this was, I think, the largest overall, but not, I think, the most impactful.
What areas are actually flooding in this area?
Within this one, you've got an area over on Lincoln.
Yes.
And depth quarter of Lincoln Division is the first one, that you come on down, then we had one on Daisy and Gary, and then had one on Bell, uh, we put the little bridges here before we get to Mr. and Mrs. Kirk's there, is that real people's camp? Uh, one side of the creek is, is completely flooded, and so, we're gonna have to enter a rip route to fix that problem, to boot, the lane that was on the other side of the back flood at this time.
Yeah, I did a lot of, and again, as Mayor Gil very eloquently stated, flash floods are flash flooding, that's all you can do, all about, and we can, we know, recognize certain areas that need some attention, and we've never had the ability to get in there and do anything about it, so, legally. Just looking at Daisy and Gary, you know, and how it's washed out that, I can just ride up to the street, I mean, is that still on their, you know, our responsibility to try to fill that in, and then, you...
Replace that, maintain some of the...
So, that's what we're, yeah, so, we're trying to decide, I mean, I mean, we can, you can stand back and look at a lot of these issues, and go, "It's not ours, it's not our problem," well, it is downstream, it, it could go from a non, uh, easement, drainage easement, to one that is, it's just so, it's, it's kind of like, well, it's just that, we, we have, it skips around, and so, in my opinion, and I think, they would agree, the city will agree, that in order to fix a problem, you gotta have the whole thing, so, we would be probably looking at some areas of what traditionally, or you wouldn't think are ours to, to do, but, I've always said to Jeff, and any, any street director that I keep running off, that if it, if it makes a difference downstream, or, I mean, for reaction, there's reaction, so, uh, it's just, it's just part of the, part of the puzzle, I guess, I don't know if that answered your question, but, yeah, that's our concern. I'm, I'm sure I'm wrong, I mean, I'll myself ask this question, is this a stream, or is this a drainage ditch? Yes.
I don't think it is a mainstream, I believe it's, it's a drainage ditch.
So, on top of, um, to go along with this, I was gonna announce later, too, that we have a meeting, I finally got everybody at the table, that I wanted, uh, hopefully, on the twenty-fifth of this month, we have a meeting with Corps of Engineers, uh, come from Walhalla's office, and Colonel Gibbons, uh, Chappy, to sit down and really talk about what the issues in Greenwood, you know, we, we, we're a city of streams, right, we're a city of creeks, and that sounds, it sounds like a nice thing, but it's, it's not so much when it rains three or four inches in an hour or two, so, we got, we got some issues, and I know, overall, and I understand residents don't necessarily think we're doing anything, but if you're in my position, that Dr. Lee knows, and all of you know, that it takes a long time to get things going in the right direction, so, we will seek advice about, I think, what you're alluding to there, Mr. Baker, uh, what corps allows us to do, and what they don't, so, uh, I'm trying to make as many things drainage easements as I can, because if you, if you, if there's a drainage easement that runs into a creek, and then the creek runs into another true drainage easement, you're stuffed, so, I answered yes, because... If that makes sense. And Jeff, how does this impact your budget, or, or, uh?
Well, we, we won't know until we get these, get these easements, and then we'll have to have it engineered, the flow for hydrology, so...
This, this is...
This is the first step.
This, this is literally for the survey?
Yes.
Then, what you gotta do?
Uh, my motion, Dr. Ridley.
Second. Motion, second, to adopt.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Greenmark?
Yes. Thank you, that's a big step, thank you very much. Uh, number ten, Archie.
Hi, I'm Jerry, Professor Paul, I have a counsel, and for common purposes. I've left very much this year, that's good, thank you.
Yeah.
They love...
You were...
Uh, I take a lot after the string line, but Tom just, uh, made the engine first, go to start budgeting, and I'm like that. Uh, this is a resolution authorizing sale, the ninety-seven freightliner, uh, bumper trucks, the ones sitting out here back, that's the one we just, uh, replaced with our new engine line, Redlands, Oklahoma, there's town, Department, if you go north of Spire, go across Arkansas River, or Railroad Bridge, you'll go in that area, and one thing I can find out there, it's a couple of houses, a fire station, a couple of late fire station, and they came, or looked at the truck, and called in, and said, or voted, voted, uh, to let them purchase it for the full purchase price, before the loan was up, so, I'm coming to you, I said, uh, I did, have you read your, uh, council report, uh, I've talked with a couple of salesmen, and went online, and they said it's a very fair price for this engine, it's twenty-four years old, so...
I have to commend you on the way you all take care of us, that thing looks shiny and new to me, and I mean, I'm...
Which makes you...
Y'all take such good care of it.
Makes you wonder why they do?
Yeah, it looks like it could just, you know, last another twenty-four years.
I'll sort of like it.
I really, it looks good.
Well, Chief, I, I have obviously no issue with this, I just, I'm just trying to figure out why you're coming to us with this, I mean, I've seen in the past, if people just sell stuff to the cities, I've said something, I've let us know a thing about it, well, I appreciate the campaign asking us to make money for the city.
As far as I know, it's acquired, so it's one of them.
It's evidently it's not, but...
Why, really, though? Does that maybe tell where everything is, we have?
Well, I think a motion would pass this, regardless.
Second.
Motion, second, pass.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Greenmark?
Yes. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And you're complaining, yeah?
Save the best for last. Uh, gentleman, this item number eleven, repeal or replace ordinance twenty-one eleven, regulating the flood damage, uh, uh, ordinance, uh, we recommend this for emergency passes, I'm gonna have Hunter and me come up here, he's our footlane manager, and he can explain to you what, uh, the ordinance, uh, entails, and why we need an emergency on there.
Hunter? What do we... I send back, looking at all of the issues that we had in flooding, uh, over Greenwood West, and city as a whole, and I hope best to do something about it, in the only way that we can, and that is the regulation, um, I took the current ordinance that we have, I added a couple of new sections to it, and I would like to propose, uh, this ordinance that prohibits any development of floodplain across the board, and it does add a variance section to that, so that any decision requiring flooding, you do have to go in front of the body. I don't see how it's our capabilities at all, I just, I want more than one opinion, like control of the future flooding decisions.
Six, six, five, five passes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I still have some obligation, I, I still have obligation for the buyer, certain documentation from RDOT, whether or not they provide the information.
He's not letting RDOT slide?
Well, I mean, it's not a healthy flooding situation at all, I'll be, you know, I don't know if that's, whether I'm for or against the deal is irrelevant, so, RDOT, we've conversation with them, they are having to mitigate in other areas to offset the damage that they're doing to the footlane with all development, whether that amounts upstream or downstream, they have to mitigate what they've impacted us.
So, upstream, downstream, of our, of our streams?
Yes, in our, in our direct area, in our waterside.
Well, I mean, we, we somehow got the county, or the state, or whoever, to go down the bash, clear that thing out all the way, and even got the Chappy boys involved, the last time we had horrible flooding, and they got involved, and that helped for a long time, now, obviously, these flash floods, like we talked about earlier, I mean, you can't do anything about four inches in three hours, it's gonna flood, but ultimately, the little bit of work we did there, around Walgreens, and the wide, and all that area, by the, we're hearts of, and all that, but, if the creek's not cleared out downstream, I mean, doesn't do a lot of it, no.
And that's the purpose of the meeting, so it fits.
Yeah, I mean, but you're not gonna build six rednecks, and that'd be a good, you wrote two for ties.
Clear.
Right. So, we're in your A game.
We're all been aware of this, press...
I'll be representing the rednecks, I should.
You got that point.
I mean, I'm certainly all for, and I, I'm, obviously, it's the right way to go, I'm just saying, some of those other folks might not care what our town is, you know? Well, maybe Dr. Johnson will be there.
Yeah, and I wanna go on record, too, as saying that Walhalla's office is very anxious to help, uh, and so is Colonel Gibbons, but we, we went out there, a group of us, Hunter went, Sonny went, myself, I can't remember Danielle, because she likes to freak ride from military base, but, uh, we went out there and had a really good visit with Colonel Gibbons, and he, he literally has already put part of the fun, the unintended boots on the ground, to, to figure out what's going on, and I, I went out there, and I told him, I said, "We're not here to point fingers."
Chief Ryan also went.
Chief Ryan went, that's correct. Chief Ryan went, that's correct.
He's getting his thumbs up.
So we went out there and he was very kind and anxious to help us to see what was in that direction, to see what was, if there was a clog, if you will, so.
Love to learn, you know, when it says, when section five says, and our planning jurisdiction, you know, how do we really control that, you know, outside of this?
So I'll put that in there, so that we have some control of the subdivision that are coming to place. And just, for example, this is not something that's been proposed, it's just an easy way to explain it, passed through ninety-six, if someone only put a subdivision out there, and that's all floodplain, floodway, that's under the city's jurisdiction, this ordinance is identified. So we could, we could prevent any destruction of our downstream floodplain that would then alter our baseball elevations. I had to include that just for safety purposes. The variance section of this, that would go in front of the planning commission to request that, if approved, the remainder of these regulations and what has been in place all along would then fly. It is not free for any, once the variance is approved. It just goes back to the regular constraints that are in effect right now.
And why do you feel like we need an emergency?
I have got some items on the horizon that could be any day, that are in particular the areas of town that don't need any more dirt building in the floodplain, and I'd like to put the stop to that. And I have the ability through the, through the ordinance as it is, but they're going to come, they're going to come to you to appeal it. I really just go ahead and throw another, another reason in the ordinance to prevent anything in the future.
And so, Mr. Taylor, you're going to take this to the planning commission?
No, I'm taking the sidewalk, sidewalk ordinance to the planning commission. I promised anybody I would bring that to, to them, bring their attention.
This is, if I may, this is, this is just a great tool, it gives him more power to, to stop the things, and I know what he's speaking of, and he doesn't want to necessarily put those folks on the spot today, but we all know, I know, and I know you know, that tomorrow, I know they're not predicting it, but it could rain five inches or four inches or three inches. Anything I feel, in my opinion, anything we can do to immediately stop, anything we can, anything we can help to make prevent, to prevent these floods, and like you said, three inches an hour you can't. When folks are planning literally to go out and bill in some creek, he needs to bill whether he stops that.
Like, you know, like Tim said, you know, when he mentioned Walgreens, you know, I've been impressed how we maintained that, I mean, you just look that way, it's all clear, you know, there, but it's always a matter of one point, it's the weakest link, downstream, whatever, if it gets congested, it's going to back up and stuff, but.
I'm not trying to drag anybody's name out, but somebody's filling a creek, I'm certain those other entities besides us that probably don't like that.
I agree.
Well, there, there are, but in, in that.
It's a, it's a proposed project, and I, I believe the individual will, they comply. I just want the clothes on the door, get them to.
Yeah. Yeah, you're, you're, we're not the only one.
Right.
If you said ditch, go down Lincoln, I was about to say, but when you said something about creek, that's, getting a big voice over here. And we're trying to stay on our good side.
Right.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion, put this ordinance on, my, for the first reading by Tom Long.
Second.
Motion second. Yes, sir.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Raymar?
Yes.
Yes. An ordinance regaling and replacing Greenwood ordinance twenty-one, actual weather and all other ordinances in conflict there with regulating a flood damage prevention program, allowing for a variance procedure for activity in the floodplain to the city of Greenwood and its planning jurisdiction, declaring an emergency number of purposes.
I make motion, we spin the rules by the second, third.
Second.
Motion second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Raymar?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Raymar?
Yes.
Motion to enact the works.
Second.
Motion in seconds to enact the works.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
We know.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Raymar?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr.. Did you want to go on record for that?
Yes.
Yes. A lot of the way this meeting is having a lot.
Yes, yes. So, yes, thank you all, Tim, thank you, Larry, I think good steps in getting this out of the water, especially, hopefully. Department reports and questions from council. Well, what is this, and I, I, we're on a good pace right now, and I hate to get Mr. Perry involved, but what this second law is about, is this from him? Is this from?
Yes.
I was just curious, I guess if there's probably no answer, you might be able to tell me what this, I was seeing something about a lucky strike plan, what was that?
Well, the official plan, oh, they used to be Norman.
Norman.
Yeah, they're, they're, you know, they're back in business, and we met with them, I think I met with them six times now, just trying to see what they need to help to find employees, we work with Dennis Williamson, you know, he's able to directly to find out what kind, we're trying to do that, so.
Oh, I just thought, it said here it had caused it to close, I thought it was closed again, I thought, I was wondering what it happened.
No, it had closed back first of the year.
Oh.
Yeah, there was some legal thing that went on in the creek thing, and they've got new owners in place, and so it's, they're back in there and then they're producing lure, I think they made forty thousand in the last six weeks.
Millions of tenants lures out in said creek behind the house over there, we might get them to do a little clearing out for the.
Testing.
And get Toby Keys to say, sing a prayer for them.
They're trying to clear them, Jack Norman.
That's reasonable.
Well, under the old ownership, I usually get a fish lure dropped off the canyon.
Yes.
And they're calling the city.
No, yeah.
I had, I also had some, they called me about, you know, about cars, being hard to get to, and answer a call or whatever.
The Smiths, would you like to?
Yeah. Oh, do you have a camera?
I will, let me say this, for the record, maybe a little bit, I don't know, but she, she actually, she definitely speaks to cars directly and has that line, so she can fix things really, really quick. But I will say, a lot of the complaints, as far as pickup, in my opinion, that we see on Facebook.
Are outside of the area. There is a huge problem going on with counting.
I mean, if it's cars, but it's since they picked up.
Yeah, so, so what you're seeing on Facebook, if that's some of your concern, that is not in city limits. Now, we make it a call once or twice a week on an issue, and it will either be, what, I can't get anybody to answer, or it can be, they just happen to miss me for some reason, but they got everybody else on the street. And when that happens, I can text, email, or call Jason, which is like the number three person, he was here last month or the month before, and they get it done like right then. So we're not really having any issues. Now, the county, I see on Facebook, are having lots and lots of issues where the law role is right now that whoever the county has on contract with, that's who you have to take, whether you want to use them or not. I know when I lived in Huntington, it was the same thing, we had to use whoever we had, because that's who the county had contract with. So all these people were with others, and now I guess maybe their contract renewed, and so there's a lot of people that do not want to go with cards for whatever reason, and there's, I saw a petition that's going around too, for county residents to sign to get out of the, for the county to try to get out of the contract with cards. So what you're seeing on Facebook is not city residents. But we can quickly get a part, a hold of cards and get problems resolved.
Like you said, there are a few complaints with these.
Hardly any anymore.
I see.
I mean, in the very beginning, it was a lot, and they are growing at a rapid pace, and so they are doing the best that they can, I could probably get like three months of this, Jason. They are growing at a rapid pace, that they are having a hard time to keep up, and they're also having a hard time hiring people, like most companies around, and so that is something that they are dealing with. But as far as city issues, we can get those resolved very quickly. Jason and I have a very good relationship.
Dan?
Thank you, ma'am.
Carol?
I was going to ask Sonny, and he, I probably know the answer, y'all over signed it just a while back for rezoning there at King Mountain and ten highway, and I guess it failed. Any other questions for Department of Eds? If not, we'll wait in council for them. Yeah, yes, sir.
I'm not, I'm not on the agenda, but I would like to address council. I'd like to give you an update on these village. First of all, I want to thank the Department of Eds, our planning commission, water, sewer, chief, fire chief called me everywhere this week, said, buddy, I know you've got several piles of brush out there, I'm sure you're going to want to burn it. I'm going to put a burn ban, if you want to burn it, burn it now. I've worked in other cities, and we never had that kind of working relationship that they said, hey, and I mean, I don't think all of these guys are developer friendly, but they're doing a good job, every one of them. And I think the council did a good job. I have enjoyed working with each one of these guys, the sewer, the water, the street department. If there's a problem, they come and say, hey, we got a call, we were moving dirt last week, we were moving dirt for a month, and it was creating a lot of dust. We immediately took the track hole to the retention pond, and was taking water out of the retention pond, putting a dump truck wetting the road down. So if you get word that we were watering, and we didn't have water to do it with, it was from our retention pond. And while they're talking about the floods, I'd like to say that our retention pond is working very well. Our storm drains filled that retention pond up and it let it out gradually. We have three custom homes already sold, we have five getting ready to start. Our fragiles are coming in north of two hundred thousand dollars, or two hundred dollars per square foot. That'll help pretty quick, you mentioned it. Thank you for letting us do it, and we plan to make you proud of us.
Thanks, buddy. You failed to mention that you work well with the mayor, but that's okay. Thank you, sir.
I probably will make the paper, but thank you all.
Yes, sir, thank you. I was also learning, Jeff, do you need explanation of this or?
Did you have those in the?
Yeah, I gave them Charlotte.
Okay.
I'll put them in the package.
Okay, y'all both got them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is it just? Do you need a little? So you need to look out for the oranges?
You have a little.
Yeah, for that, the last, you said.
Yeah, that's what we had on agenda last time. Yeah, but it's a good, it's a tool. I have it on my desk, Jeff, being a like, but I look at every day and say, hey, it's basically.
And there's a lot more to it than that's all that I can do with the, in the background with this stuff. It's amazing, I've kind of got, I like technology, it's got way up there for me, even on the things that you can do with this stuff. It's all, like I said, it's all free software, you know, so it's easy to use with Google or everything, everything else, that's what we're using.
And so, you have anything like saying in the red or the oranges, is like saying something that's, you're really looking at.
That's right.
Great, all right, that's, appreciate it. No problem. I've got a critical over in front of my house on this, where, where you're all at as far as out of the tile under my driveway, I would, I mean, you just do the whole deal there.
Yeah.
Should I say public?
Okay.
How's your road, Roger? It's pretty cool. It's actually fair, it's right in front of my house. Right in your house is a pretty little spot. They, they.
We can go up on that road.
Anything else for any other Department?
All the traffic stacked up.
I would like to add one thing.
Yes, sir.
Hunter has streamlined two building permits. I can walk in his office and walk out in thirty minutes with a building permit, and that is a major help.
Please ensure to tell Mr. Walker that.
Sir?
Oh, yeah.
Please ensure to tell Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Yeah.
A couple of times. We're keeping to ourselves. Council form, anything else? I was going backwards there for a second. I'd like to make a motion to approve the attorney's invoice. Okay. Now, a motion, second, second to approve the invoice, Mr. Walker.
Uh, Ralph, Ralph?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Raymar?
Yes.
I got a couple of things myself, real quick, you know, school's starting very soon, I believe, what day is it?
Fourteenth.
So let's, as we all know, traffic will become heavy, and as it does all across this nation. So we're no different, we're no different than any other place. But I, I'm really, and we'll continue to talk about this, and the police are going to, I visited with the school the other day on it, we're all on the same team here, we want to keep everybody safe, so I'm just encouraging folks to be patient, and get used to it as, as best you can, and it will, it is what it is, it's school traffic, so be careful and watch the kids. Is Mr. Bell?
Uh, mentioned by our burgess.
Yes, I've got her down, so next, yes, thank you. Ms. Myra Burgess has passed, if you don't know, Dr. Burgess is, well, just another icon of our great city, has passed, her visitation was tonight, tomorrow was the funeral at ten o'clock at the Church of Christ here in town. I encourage you to attend if you can, I'm, I'm sure, she was a great lady indeed. So the good news is that her and Doc are holding hands again, so.
That's right.
With, talking to Terry, that's for sure. Later note, Frog Bayou Bridge is officially ours, I know you're all excited, try to hold your, we're excited. I will say, because Mr. McDaniel is not here, we got another half, a free bridge, which turns out not to be free by the time you put it in place, but we are, we are in, I got the letter today, or the notice today, that's being transferred to us, once it's transferred to said holding facility, which I think we're going to work and deal with how, where the other bridge was put together, taken apart, put together, we're going to try to get it out there. Our department is not necessarily excited about it, of course, he's shaking his head, but hopefully we will get it out there, free charge, and then it'll be ours to decide what we want to do with it at a later date. It is similar to the one that we just placed at the lake, but instead of ninety feet long, it's sixty feet long, and that is the Frog Bayou Bridge in Vanier, it has another name to it too, but good bets on a free bridge.
Do we don't have any idea where it's going yet?
Well, I, I, we've talked about possibly out at, I'm not pointing to them anymore, I'm not looking at you.
The last spring, we're all, people are afraid, I just thought, maybe, we have a.
It'll cost more than that.
Yeah, or whatever.
We talked about out at, in your subdivision, sorry, can't think, Cricket Creek, Cricket Creek, it may be a little overkill for that.
But it's really our only choice to get across there.
Right.
We, we won't get a permit any other way.
You know, we own, if that doesn't work out, or whatever, we own a little piece of property right here on the other side of this creek, it could be a little park over there, if the Corps agrees to put a bridge across this creek, across there now, we're going to be doing anything soon with it, one for there for sure, because that bridge will be gone, and they're going to replace that with a new bridge, so we don't want to do that, but it'll be ours, we should do with it. You know, I, I don't want the thing to sit around like the other one did for fifteen years, but it's not going to hurt, it's an empty, it's old.
That's right. There's some very creative ideas out there.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, I think that's all I have, vote, 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 please, on the eighth, early vote now. So, please vote, 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 not that many times, just vote once, but it is very, very important, uh, I met with Mayor McGill, several, a couple mayors today, and of course, Gary Lawrence from Huntington was on TV today, Mayor Lawrence from down there, it's so important to all of us, twenty, twenty-six million dollars to Fort Smith, I think, and it's time to eloquently put two point six, or whatever it is, to us, two point seven, uh, I'm not appreciating required, but please, tell your family members who live in this, in this county, which I think you do, please go vote for this, an extension of this tax, not a new tax, extension of the tax that was already had.
About the third one?
Yes, and, and according to Danielle, it takes you longer to eat out of your car to do the vote.
Derek, am I not allowed to ask his comp, he's got a doomsday backup plan?
I don't think you're old.
Yeah, there's almost no way it won't pass, but I've seen string of legs.
Oh, I, we've had, we, today, both Casey and I both have had conversations and, we've had conversations about what it is, and I do have that, but it would entail possibly going after the last quarter from NUPUS that was dropped, that one point two five is now one, if you go after that, there's a long shot that you can get it, because the longer you go past the day it was dropped, the less likely it is for them to have it so that you can get it, although, we could make a big argument that it all comes to Greenwood, it's not pushing down towards the county based on that, so, that's one of the things, the other would be that, uh, we would, uh, conserve as much as we could for four or five years, mayor's out of office, and we go back there.
We wouldn't be able to fund the senior center and the women girls club either with it.
No, there would be so many good things that are on.
It would be very detrimental, the parks would probably be eliminated.
And there's a low, I think, councilman, the Rainwater just said it's a low count of their voting, as you can kind of imagine, and it would obviously eight's vote, but one might have said, well, they're all coming, but, yes, well, you don't know that, so. Yes, sir.
What's my answer?
I'm sorry, get your answer.
Jim Reynolds.
Thank you.
Uh, I was really disappointed in the slow rollout of the information on this tax, and I've made that known, I wanna make it known tonight, that I thought we should have, as an advertising person to him, uh, I would have started a little bit earlier to do that, and, uh, and we have UAFS to think about, they didn't pass their tax, and I believe that was about a ten million dollar spam food, because they didn't start a VR campaign, so.
Problem we have too, is that the city cells in these taxes, well, just divert some of the city cells in these taxes to operations, and not according to the restrictions that are currently in place on how to use city cells in use tax, you don't have that luxury, because it would be put into a general operating, which brings salaries, which is specifically excluded from use, so, we're fighting that battle as well, and that does change in twenty-six, so, two years from now, or three years from now, we're looking at, you're at, you're looking at, uh, the sunset of the city cells in taxes, we're gonna keep strategizing now for that, so we can avoid Jim Reynolds, who's gonna, who's gonna, who's slowing that out, I heard you a lot of the players.
Did you just hear a piece, talking about the city cells in these taxes, we've already started, so, back off. Thank you all for being here, thank you, please keep the Burgess family in your prayers, vote, and thank you, Dr. Lee Johnson, for what you do, continue to do, for us, and congratulations. Thank you, thank you, everybody, uh, any motion to?
Sure.
Thank you all.